Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Ministry of National Security's Town Hall Meeting on Immigration Reform. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for coming out this evening. And our order tonight is going to be quite simple. I will explain it to you in due course, but I'm going to ask the Minister of National Security, the Honorable Wayne Caines, JPMP, to come now and bring the official welcome. Shall we give him a round of applause?
It's a privilege to have your presence here tonight. We don't take it for granted. We know that you have a lot of options tonight. And thank you for working through what we believe is a complex subject. We know that it's quite emotive. It was simply a privilege to have you here tonight. I think it's very important that I share something that is quite significant. It will be disappointing for most of us. I know it is for our panel. But I think it's important that I start the meeting off with something that I feel is disappointing. We just left another meeting. And I just had to call the Premier. I told the Premier that we will not table this bill tomorrow. It was on the order paper for tomorrow. We met, and we met, and we met. And there were so many things tonight. As you can see, as a bipartisan group, we met individually, as officers, we met together. When we left the room tonight, there was no way that we could do it. We need one or two weeks separately and together to do this. And we thought it important that we had this conversation. I know this means publicly, but I felt it necessary to have that conversation, that part of the conversation upfront and openly. If you can allow us what we're going to do tonight, we're going to go through the presentation on the screen, and you will see what the plan is. And then you'll be able to see the direction, the direction of what the plans are, and you'll be able to comment thereupon. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for understanding our position.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, going forward, I'd like to, at this time, announce to you who the panel are. We've already, you've already met the Minister of National Security. I'd like to introduce Ms. Renee Ming, JPMP, from constituency number one, a member of our panel. She's also the chairperson of the Immigration Board. I also welcome Mr. Christopher Famous, JPMP, from constituency 11, a member of our panel. We've also got Ms. Leah Scott. She is the deputy opposition leader, and she's part of the panel as well, coming from constituency, if I'm correct, constituency 30. We have Benjamin Smith, constituency 30, Mr. Benjamin Smith, constituency 31, also a member of the panel. And I'd also like to recognize who will be giving a presentation also this evening, as the minister instructed, is the Permanent Secretary for the Ministry of National Security, Mr. Colin Anderson. I recognize the presence of the Chief Immigration Officer, Dr. Jonette Ming. I'd also like to recognize, at this time, primarily because he was part of our former panel. He actually combed the countryside, and he spent time on making sure that we understood what the pathways to immigration reform are all about, Mr. William Meduris from Freezemook. We are very happy to have him here with us tonight. He's also part of our panel. Thank you, William. I also recognize Mr. Brian Eaton. Mr. Brian Eaton is the Crown Consul, and he is a consultant or tactical officer in the ministry who's been responsible for providing guidance as it relates to this particular piece of legislation. It's also the immigration reform, and he's been very comprehensive, and we appreciate him. I also recognize from the ministry, a policy analyst and also tech administrator. I believe it is Ms. Clonisha Simmons. She has been vital in this process, and we appreciate her. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd also like to take this opportunity, because I realize I did it prior, but I also wanted to let those who are listening out there on the internet, those who are watching us, that this is being carried live on a number of opportunities tonight. However, there will be those of you who wish to provide comprehensive guidance. You can certainly provide that guidance by personal questions given to you. And I've given this email, J Scott, that's J S C O T T, at G O V dot B M. I'll repeat it before the program is over, so that if there is any comprehensive reply or comprehensively you wish to give to the ministry, we'll be happy to make that available to you. At this time, I'm going to ask, and I'm going to outline to you at this time, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, there may very well be those of you who wish to make a statement. There may be a very number of you who wish to have your say tonight. But what we wish to see tonight is something in a more organized fashion. What we'd like to see is that the media officers from the government will be handing out index cards. What we'd like for you to do, if you have a question tonight, write it on that card, present it to that officer, and I will read out your question to the appropriate person, so that tonight we can operate in a very, very, very orderly fashion. I believe that that is a good way to do it. I think we're going to do that tonight. But I want to make sure that we understand that this immigration reform that we are proposing as a government is something that is vital for all of us. Each and every Bermudian has a part, both here and abroad, on how this is carried out and also how that is done fairly. I recognize that there's been a feeling before that there's not been elements of fairness nor understanding between us all. I think we're getting there. I think that this immigration reform, along with education reform and the rest, will give us an opportunity to begin to understand each other. We are all touched by the things that affect us personally. But those personal matters matter not just to you, but to each and every one of us, those that are affected and those who aren't immediately affected. But I think we all recognize tonight, it affects each and every one of us. I'm going to call for the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of National Security. Please give him a hand, Mr. Colin Anderson.
Sir. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome. The purpose of this presentation is to do one thing, and that is to inform the public, okay, of government's intentions. And so we have two parts to this presentation. The first part is an update on everything that we've been doing up to this point on comprehensive immigration reform. So then I would pause, and I would take questions with respect to the other activities that we're doing on comprehensive immigration reform. And then I have the second part of the presentation, which is aimed at informing you on the government's policy intentions around the issue of mixed-status families. And then at the end of that part of the presentation, we will have questions that pertain to mixed-status families, okay? So we have indicated that there are index cards that are being passed out so that you can write down your questions. The only caveat, any qualification that I would place there, is if your question is of a very personal nature. For example, I have a relative who is in this particular situation, and I want to know what is going to happen to them as a result of this legislation, okay? I would ask that you hold that question, because we have tactical officers in the room, and we will be able to address those outside of the public town hall meeting, so that everybody does not have to hear your particular circumstances, okay? So that would be our preference. And so if you hold on to those questions, and you can have those questions answered at the end with our technical officers, okay? So, comprehensive immigration reform. We have taken the approach of doing immigration reform in four phases. The first phase was to identify the fact that we had some operational challenges and that we needed to move quickly. And so in Phase One, we immediately started working on some of the bottlenecks that we had with processing our work permits. In the second phase, we were able to partner with the private sector, and we were able to come into the Department of Innovation, and we were able to identify one of the most important workflows. And we were able to map that process, identify the bottlenecks, and come up with solutions, okay? And so the next step, of course, would be to implement and try to improve the process for processing work permits. So that's the same two. There is much more that we would like to do in Phase Two, such as other processes, such as status, such as other types of applications, such as land licenses and so on. Phase Three is the part of the project that we're in currently, and that's the policy and the legislative changes. And so there are many, many things that we need to discuss and that we need to change in terms of the policy and the Bermuda Immigration Protection Act. It's not just mixed-status families, it's also PRC. It's status, it's issues around land licenses, it's governance issues in terms of the Board of Immigration. There are administrative processes, there's work permit policy, and on and on. So this is the first step in us trying to address one component of the policy and the legislative changes. And it was felt that the mixed-status families was one of those areas that there was a tremendous amount of consensus in the community that this needed to be fixed. And so we'll get more into that later. And then Phase Four is the implementation. And so because of the redevelopment of the airport, there is a new system that we needed to put in place, which is our board of management system, and that was well underway. And so we've selected a vendor and we've started the implementation for that particular project. And in future phases of that Phase Four, there are other system issues, process issues, people issues, application form issues, all of the implementation types of issues that we have to actually address as a result of the policy and the legislative changes that come through. So first we do the policy changes, and then it filters through to how the department actually operates. So that's the overall roadmap in terms of the four phases of comprehensive immigration reform. And we have had quite a bit of progress up to this point. So up to this point, we have addressed a large number of work permits that were backlog. We have introduced new methods of how we actually deal with infractions in terms of work permit violations. We have, as I already mentioned, had a great start in terms of implementing our new border management system. Is everyone able to see the screen? Okay. I'm not quite sure how we're going to fix that. Hold on one second. Is it possible to dim lights? Okay.
Can technical staff see to the lights?
Okay, it's good enough. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We've also opened up dialogue around open and closed and restricted categories of work permits. And we've also done data collection in support of some of the work around mixed-status families. We are in the final stages of dealing with some of the stakeholders with respect to the airport redevelopment. And so one of the critical pieces for that development is the introduction of e-gates. So hopefully, when you come into the new airport, it will be a fast, wonderful customer experience. And all of the work that is taking place behind the scenes is between all of the various stakeholders. And so that is well underway. And then we've also completed the review that we had of some of the open and closed categories. There are also initiatives that we have in progress and that we hope that we will move them forward as expeditiously as we can. One of which we're going to talk about next, which is the proposed changes to the Immigration Act in terms of mixed-status families. And there are also other matters that need to be discussed, such as PRC and status. And the government will come back and will inform the public on the direction that they will take in due course, once some of those discussions have taken place. There are also opportunities that we've identified to improve the process for work permits. And so we want to fully execute some of those opportunities. And I have a slide that speaks to that. And then there's the overall IT strategy and how we improve the processes in terms of digitization and automation of the department. So there's still quite a bit that we need to do. And this is just one small snippet of some of the work that we're doing on process improvement. There are multiple opportunities that we've identified with some of our external partners and also listening to the staff at the Department of Immigration. And some of these just make sense from a process perspective in terms of improving the customer experience and making the process more efficient. And so some of them include making it easier for you to pay for your work permits, having a more streamlined set of information that goes to the board, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of work that's being done. It's being done behind the scenes, but hopefully you'll see significant benefits as a result of that. So that's the first part of the presentation. That's what the Ministry of National Security has been doing since November 2018 in terms of immigration coming under this particular portfolio. So at this point, I'm just going to pause just for one moment and just ask if there are any questions on that part, which is the update on some of the reforms. Could the house side some applications need to get up? No? There are no questions?
Yes.
I'm prepared to accept the issue. I'm prepared to accept. I'd like to remind everyone else that you place your, on your card, you place your question to the appropriate person. You write on the bottom who to use, the person on the panel that you wish for them to answer your question. That would be of great assistance. Ma'am, I'm happy to take your question. Good evening. Yes, ma'am.
I guess I, I'm so, and I don't want to get into my emotional feelings when we're in this mandatory, emotional discussion that we have here. But I keep hearing that it's just work permits. Work permits are being issued. There are so many, if we haven't had really an opportunity to even discuss and come in and ask questions about what's going on with immigration and questions from the floor, however it is. And then I'm thinking of, when we're looking at work permits, that means we are bringing in more foreign workers here. We're not addressing the actual, what is happening with employers who are bringing in these foreign workers, when we're, we're our Bermudians in this, in this situation. And we're looking at those jobs that are under, you know, the $30,000, $40,000 bracket. And we're bringing in persons who don't speak English. And how are these work permits being approved? It just doesn't, it's just confusing that we're bringing in persons. Some are very not qualified in those areas. I know, for instance, at the, and I'm just going to make this statement because this is from, it's all on work permits right now. At the airport, there are right now, it was told me, because I have a relative who works there at the airport, in the electrical area. And he told me, Nana, or anyone.
Yes, this is a question. And yes, we appreciate the story.
He just told me that there are persons with four different languages at the, working at the airport, four or five different languages. Most of these persons, they do not speak English.
Yes.
Many of them are not skilled in what it is because the Bermudians have to show them even some of the tools. I'm just confused as to how the Immigration Board is allowing these permits and these persons to come into this island. Now, that's not the only thing, because...
Thank you.
Okay, because that's good.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you very much. Permanent Secretary, the question is, as it relates to the languages that are in, as it relates to the languages that are, or the lack thereof of languages for the Permanent Secretary. Has any of the panel wished to answer outside of the Permanent Secretary? The Chairperson of the Immigration Board is Renee Ming.
Good evening. Good evening. I think that whenever we think about Bermudian employment, we are definitely passionate, and I say "we," I'm talking about the board. We are passionate about making sure that we are creating a level playing field and that we are scrutinizing the applications that are before us as best we can. The board, and I've been, I've sitting in the board now for just under two years. And I can tell you, Ms. Williams, with my hand over my heart, that every application that comes to our board is scrutinized. We ask questions, we push back, we ask for organizational structure, we ask for training and development plans for Bermudians. We are assessing any bit of information that is put in front of us. So I know for you, you're saying that it seems like it's a lot of ex-patriot workers coming here. But the ones that are coming through our board, I can tell you without any hesitation that we are scrutinizing it as best we can. If there is a Bermudian that is suitably qualified, close to being qualified, or anything, we will push back. We have no problem with that and ask. So I hope that that gives you some level of reassurance. But I also want to say to you that you have to, there are some categories of work permit that do not make it to the Immigration Board. And so you're speaking particularly about the airport, and that they have a separate memorandum of understanding. So unfortunately, I can't speak to that part, but I can speak to the work of the board. And while I'm actually in the seat, I would like to actually thank the board, because the board meets week in, week out, tirelessly, manually processing in terms of files, boxes, in a room, and lots of conversation is had, lots of disagreements at times. And what it is, the end result, is what is in the best interest of Bermuda and her people. So hopefully that assists you with that particular question. Yes, and so on the, on the agenda.
I think, I think, I think you highlighted something. And I think the reason why what you highlighted is so significant, because you have spoken for a number of people that are, that are not here tonight and people that are not able to find jobs in Bermuda. And so what, I think, one of the things that we are... I think one of the challenges, one of the challenges that we have, Ms. Williams, is as a ministry, we have the responsibility of making sure that we keep commerce going in Bermuda, but at the same time, making sure that Bermudians have a place of privacy in their country and making sure that Bermudians are giving opportunities. So that is a delicate balance. So understand what that looks like. We have to make sure that Bermuda's economy is thriving and moving, and that people are coming into Bermuda, but at the same time, ensuring that Bermudians are getting opportunities. And that is indeed a delicate balance. And what I hear you saying, and what the average Bermudian want is, they want for Bermudians not to be watching opportunities, but to make sure that they're getting opportunities in their own country. And that is not lost on anyone on this panel or anyone in this room. I can tell you, and I want to deal with specifically what are we doing in the Immigration Department, because that's what you're asking. The Immigration Department have a compliance department. And then the compliance department, when complaints are made, and there is, there are email addresses, and there is a number that people are given, and there is a compliance team. When somebody highlights a problem, or somebody that's working outside of the work permit, or somebody that is doing certain things or illegal employment practices, the compliance team investigates them, they go to their place, and there is a system that holds them to account. If there are fines that are put in place. And so what we do is based on the email address. And there was a campaign in the earlier part of this year to highlight the email address, highlight the number that people call. What we don't do is we don't go around and broadcast that this person was fined, or this person was deported, or this person was, the results. But that is a constant process. The compliance team are constantly working. We're not saying that there are not nefarious employers that should not be held to account. Of course they should. But we have a department that we believe are working very fastidiously to make sure that people are held to account who are indeed bad actors. There is a responsibility that we have to also make sure that Bermuda Incorporated is working and that people are coming in. It is not lost on me, it's not lost in this government, that we have to make sure that Bermudians are working. It is a delicate balance. We will continue to do so. Something that you spoke of, and it resonates, is people that are working in customer-facing roles and they do not speak English. That is something that we are working on. Quite soon, we're in the consulting phase of ensuring that if you are working in a customer-facing role, that you have to do, take a test called the TOEFL, Test of English as a Foreign Language, yes? And so if you are working in a customer-facing role, you're going to, and we're going to soon, say what that policy looks like. That is something that we're going to, that is going to be implemented in Bermuda. We understand that it is important, that if you go to a restaurant, that the person serving you should be able to speak English. Everyone feels that way. It's very important that when you, when you go to a hairdresser or to a barber shop, the person that's doing your hair, that they should speak English. That is reasonable, and that is something that we realize, and that's something that we're putting in place. We know in certain circumstances, that is not taking place. There have been significant complaints in specific areas. We've heard the complaints. We're putting policies into place. When it comes to Bermudians that are not being able to find employment, we have a system at Workforce Development. We have the Department of Labor. And if employers are not keeping and in breach of the Employment Act, there are ways to make sure that employers held to account through the Employment Act, making complaints to the Department of Workforce Development. If there are certain jobs that go on the job board, there are specific things that have to happen through going on the job board. And so we believe that there are checks and balances that are put in place. Ms. Williams, I'm not going to say that it's perfect. There are oftentimes people come to me, they go to my colleagues, and they say that they're not able to find work. We have to be and continue to press in this regard. We have to make sure that our people, that Bermudians, are given opportunities in our country. That is something that we must continue to work for, and we are committed to doing that. You've highlighted something that is important to all of us, and we will continue to work for that, because it's important to all of us. Thank you for highlighting that.
To the, to the Chairperson of the Immigration Board. Ladies and gentlemen, we've received a number of other questions. I'll be reading them just shortly. The one thing I just wanted to mention is, is that in writing your questions, recognize that even though you've handed them in, either they've already been answered, or that they will be processed and looked at. And I do believe that we've received some very good ones that will not find themselves on the air, but are process questions that are guidance, and we're going to use them as an example. One, for instance, is saying, as it relates to a process of making sure that the questions and answers that we do have are made available on a website. And that's an excellent, excellent, excellent question. Minister, as it relates, and Permanent Secretary, as it relates to this consultation process, the person asks that while you have already announced that you will not be tabling tomorrow, the question is, is will there be further consultations, further meetings, and the ability for those individuals out there to have an opportunity to speak on this matter of immigration reform?
I think that I met, we met with our colleagues today, and we've had some, we've had some conversations. I think the conversations that we need to have now, it's with reference to my colleagues. We need to get, there were, there were some, there were some concerns about the parts of the legislation. And we need to, as my colleagues, the colleagues from, I don't want to speak for, and I'll let my OBA colleagues speak for themselves. I need to have a further conversation with our colleagues. We met at the table today. Just to be clear, this, this bill was on the order paper for tomorrow. We sat in a room this afternoon, we sat in the room this afternoon, and we fought.
Minister.
And we realized we had to make a decision. Do we do this, or do we hold it, and we go through this thing again, get back around the table as colleagues, and do it one more time? And we, I made a decision after consultation with my colleagues at this table that we have to have another conversation with our colleagues about this. I, whilst I am concerned that we have moved the date again, I believe that this is that significant, where I need to be in the room and caucus with my colleagues one more time. We have to look at it again.
Yes, Minister.
And I would allow for my colleagues to speak.
Thank you, Minister. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody.
And to Leah Scott.
MP Leah Scott.
We are committed in the OBA to working collaboratively with the PLP to ensure that we have the best legislation possible for Bermudians and for people who live in Bermuda, PRCs and other statuses. We have been working together now since 2017. Immigration reform is a very, very complicated subject, and while deadlines can be imposed and desires can be imposed, the fact of the matter is that we want to be able to present something to you that we can live with as a committee and Bermuda can live with as a country. And because we don't want the law of unintended consequences to come into play, we want to ensure that everything that we do does not create a consequence that we cannot live with, because what we are doing is granting rights, and those rights can't be revoked once they are in place. I think that everybody is for immigration reform. I think that everybody knows of a scenario where there are mixed families that need to be regularized, where there are positions that just are not fair. But I think the biggest hesitation for all of us is for people who come to Bermuda and live, and they live better than the people in Bermuda. And that's not fair. And no one should be able to enjoy our country better than we enjoy it.
Thank you.
So in addition to the mixed status portion, as MP Ming has alluded to, we need to ensure that the work permit portion is also inculcated into this process. We have to understand that people are struggling, and we have to do what we can to preserve the jobs for Bermudians, to make sure that our Bermudians are qualified and afforded the opportunities. It's not fair for me to work at an insurance company at the same level as somebody else, and they get a housing allowance and I don't because I'm Bermudian. And those things need to be regularized, and they need to be remedied. And so I'm asking you, and I'm asking through this panel, to the premier and the government of Bermuda, to allow Minister Keynes the leeway to produce something that is going to be comfortable as it possibly can be for everyone. Allow us the time to prepare a document that will allow us to have our fights, but to ensure that at the end of the day, if there are any consequences, they are consequences that we are prepared to live with as a country and as a family.
Thank you very much. At this time, I recognize the presence of the Minister of Education and also the presence of the Minister with our portfolio, Minister of Education, the Honorable Diallo Robane, and the Minister with our portfolio, the Honorable Jamal Simmons. Thank you for coming tonight. At this time, I will read a question given to Renee Ming, MP. It stays, it says, "Why does this immigration reform come into play at this time?" And they go on to, just to elaborate, "History proves most foreign workers see Bermuda as a goldmine. When does work permit, when one's work permit is done, why is it renewed?" Minister? No, no, it was for Renee, yes.
The questions that are asked is actually around what the work permit policy, and my involvement in terms of being on the board and serving on the Immigration Reform Working Group has definitely given me a lot of insight into the policy and the fact that the policy has, we have a lot of work to do with regards to the policy. Now, to ask me why is a work permit removed, that would be a decision that would have to be made, and that's a decision that gets, that we will discuss as a committee, and we may put forth that type of recommendation. But I don't, at this stage, the policy is the policy that we have in place, and our commitment from the Advisory Committee is that we need to look at the policy. The policy has, is very short-sighted, and it has some areas where there, it can be gray and interpretation can lead to painful situations, for lack of a better term. So why are we renewing? Well, that would be where the policy should, and what we have been doing as a board is asking, when we're doing a work permit, you're looking at a work permit, one of the questions that we are asking is, what is the training and development plan for Bermudians in this? We're very, very structured in doing that. We ask, what is the organizational chart? Show us that, show us Bermudian versus non-Bermudian. We understand that we have Bermudians that are not working, and so we try our very best to make sure that when we are looking at this, the work permit and the application and every piece of paper and thing that comes with it, that we are making, we are ensuring that the Bermudian is getting the very first shot and that the best person is going into the job. I know at times it's disappointing when there is a Bermudian that is not qualified to do it, but that is where the training and development plans must come into play. Because when we are asking for that, we're asking for you, for the employers to give us that timeframe of what does it look like to have a Bermudian in that role. So I will stop there because the Minister can probably go a little bit more and elaborate on it.
Let, I think, I think we have to go to, I think we have to establish a few things. I think we have to establish, number one, that there are certain things that have happened in this country historically to make people reticent and distrustful of the immigration process. There are some things that have happened historically that make Bermudians fearful, xenophobic, because of the historic context of what has happened to people in this country. Yes? But we also have to, we also have to factor in that based on where we are in the middle of the Atlantic, that we need guest workers in Bermuda. What we have to figure out as a country, we have to figure out a plan and a policy that works to allow us to have workers in Bermuda, to have Bermudians to thrive, and us to fix an immigration policy. The Immigration Act was written in 1956. Hold on for a second, I was born in 1970. So everyone in this room, right, you want a problem to disappear, and we want to be ideological in our, in our seats and say, you know what, I want just this person, or I don't want them to hear. Newsflash, it exists, and no amount of stomping your feet on the ground is going to make it disappear. So guess what the responsibility of us is? It is for us to sit maturely, disciplined, and put together a plan that will effectively allow us a plan to move this country forward. Now, what we have said is, the Progressive Labor Party in its platform said that we want to look at this thing in really small bites, and we said that we're going to look at comprehensive immigration reform. What does comprehensive immigration reform look like? There were some things that were going on immigration with processes, with procedures that were not working right. Let's look at getting the Immigration Department back, and we have an awesome team there. They need some support, they need some way to make it work. Let's work on that and make that department stronger. That's a pillar. Let's look at the compliance element. There are some people in that department, there are some people in Bermuda that are bad actors, there are some people that are working outside of the work permit. How do we bolster compliance in that department and make sure that Bermudians are being given opportunities, that people are not working outside of their work permit, that Bermudians are being given a place of primacy in the department? Let's work on the compliance piece. And then we had this thing where we had to say, what can we then look at that we can work on and we can fix right now? We said we're going to look at the mixed status family. And so we said to this country, we're going to look at other pieces, but what can we take on right now that we can try to work together? And in the throne speech, we said for this year, we knew there were a lot of other things wrong with immigration. We said, what is a piece that we can look at, that we can grab on, and we can look at trying to solve? Let's look at mixed status family. Not that we're not going to, we don't believe that there are other things to solve, but we had a timeline and other things that we're going to look at in the long term, but in the near term, we said, all of those things that the PS went through, we said, let's look at a few things, but let's tackle this right now. And so what we said is, what can we tackle, and we're supposed to do it in July, let's look at the mixed status problem. We know that this is not going to solve all of the issues, but we said, let's give this the college try. Let's give this the old college try. Today, when we went to the table and we tried to bring this, we realized that this could not come tomorrow because there were some significant issues. And so rather than give something that was not there, I decided with my colleagues that this thing just could not come, we need some more time to get through this. But I don't want anybody to think that we're trying to rush through comprehensive immigration reform. Understand the steps that we just said, right? There is, there are pieces to this. We're not going to solve all the problems in Bermuda in one go. The Act was written in 1956. I'm blaming my mom and you lot, right? We're now trying to get this thing together, and I, but listen, and let me say this, right? We have some problems in our country. We have said, right, look at, look at the panel, we have said that we're going to try to fix it. I'm not going to hide behind the fact that I believe that Bermuda should have a place of primacy, that we should have jobs in our country, that when companies come to Bermuda, that Bermuda should have the right to fight for jobs, that when our kids go away, that they should have the opportunity to come home and get jobs in the country. I'm not going to hide from that. But let me be equal, that we have to put a plan together where we have to make sure that our kids are working hard, that we have to work hard in this country. That's something that's equally as important, but there are some, there are some things that we also have to work on going forward. There are some things that we believe that have to be looked at as well, and there are some conversations that we have to have, there are some times we have to get in a room and we're going to, we're going to butt heads. And I believe that this process of immigration reform, it's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy. I believe that it's going to be, we were in that room hooking today. I'm famous, Renee, we had, listen, it was, it was a difficult conversation, but the reality of it was that we were able to literally come and make some headway, and I believe that together, we can try to make some changes.
Thank you, Minister. You have answered three of the questions that have been sent up thus far. Ministers, just, just this particular one, I'm going to allow it to go through. Our population has been on an incline, and taxes rising and shrinking. Population, why don't we open our doors to CARICOM nations and the ASOS to allow freedom of movement? We need more people on this island. For the panel, I've allowed that, I've allowed that statement, and I've allowed that question. Minister? Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize, it was merely a statement. Why don't we open our doors to CARICOM nations and the ASOS to allow freedom of movement? We need more people on this island. A question that's from the floor. Minister or anyone on the panel? Famous? I think Famous wants to have a say. MP Christopher Famous?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to my Aunt Jill. Let me speak on the issue of the CARICOM. CARICOM has a issue, a system called Freedom of Movement. What it entails is that persons, certain skill sets, i.e. accountants, doctors, lawyers, so on and so forth, they can move between CARICOM countries freely with no work permit, get to stay, so on and so forth. What, what the carve-out is, is that smaller islands such as Senkets, such as Antigua, such as Bahamas, not, not that it's small, but smaller than Jamaica, Guyana, or Trinidad, they have a carve-out that there is no freedom of movement because what happens in essence is that the native population, I know there's discussion what's a native, but the native population then becomes the minority. If we look at our fellow overseas territories such as Cayman Islands, Anguilla, the British Virgin Islands, Turks and Caicos, and Montserrat, and if you add in Bermuda as quote-unquote Caribbean, we are the only country that the native is the minority. Those other countries, the natives are the distinct minority in their country. So if we, if we open the door to freedom of movement from any country, whether it be CARICOM, the ASOS, the United States, or Europe, there's only a matter of time before Bermudians of all colors become the distinct minority. Prices go up because land is, land is precious there, everything goes up. There are, there's, there are going to be those who say, the more people equals to lower taxes, so on and so forth. That, that argument can be put forth in the pro and the con, but the reality is, the native will become the minority, and the price for housing, the price for food, the price for everything else, will go up, supply and demand. So as much as I love CARICOM, no, we're not having freedom of movement there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, MP Famous. As the Permanent Secretary prepares after giving us all of the processes from one to four, I just have a quickly, just for the Minister, just one short question, and that will be, there's two of them, Minister. Will there be a list of jobs that are required as it relates to English? And they're also asking, will there be an increase in penalties as it relates to those employers for infractions for, for bringing them in? And then I'll bring one other small one to you, Minister, and that relates to passports.
We are considering a list of the jobs that will be considered. Obviously, that, that will be something for jobs that are customer-facing. Clearly, we'll, obviously, the policy would have to list what the jobs are, and we would definitely be considering an increase in, in, in the fines.
Yes, so, and Minister, just one last question. The question was, as it relates to passports, when will we start the process of, will we be resuming the process of doing passports in Bermuda, is the question given by the person.
Very good question. I was due in London this past Monday to have a conversation with Lord Ahmad. We were having some very good talks over online. As you know, we had a storm on Monday, so we were not able to have that conversation on Monday. He's made some significant representations. Hopefully, I can get to London in the next two weeks, and we can, we're making some significant progress. Hopefully, we can finalize those discussions in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, Minister. Mixed status families, the Permanent Secretary.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all of your questions. It's very, very helpful for us to have that level of dialogue. So before I proceed, let me just set the stage. I want to be very, very clear about the scope, okay? So like a good project manager, we have to define the scope. So we've already said that under Phase Three, the policy and the legislative changes, that there is a tremendous amount of scope. I repeat, there's mixed status families, there's PRC, there's status, there's work permit policy, okay? There are governance issues, there's land, and it goes on and on and on. So there are many, many areas that we need to look at in terms of reform. There's even job makers and incentives for job makers. The government is intending to bring legislative changes for mixed status families at this time, okay? So for the rest of the presentation, we are focused on mixed status families, and I'm laboring this point because we consistently get asked questions that fall into the category of status or PRC. And I don't want anyone to believe that the government does not believe that these are important. These are important topics, and they must be addressed. But the topic for today is mixed status families, okay? And the other thing is, I want to make a distinction between policy and law. So today, we do not have the bill before you. It is not a public document yet. We have to go through the appropriate process for the bill to be tabled before the parliament. So today, we are talking about the policy intentions. And so I want to make it clear that we are talking generally about a problem, and we are talking generally about some of the solutions. And so that is why I had said, when you have specific questions about your personal circumstances, it would be better if we addressed those on the side, because every time we engage with some of the stakeholders, the question inevitably comes up. I have a niece who is, in this particular circumstance, does this pertain to that person? Okay? And so please have patience with us as we go through the illustrations so that we can have a general discussion on the policy intentions of the government. But rest assured that there will be legislation that will come forth at the appropriate time. Okay? So we talked about scope, and we've talked about the requirements. The other question was about the timelines, okay? If we're managing a project, if we have our project manager hat on, what are we doing in terms of the timelines? When are these changes going to come? And the answer is, as the Minister has said, when they are ready. So this is a very emotive issue. So this is a very emotive issue, and there has been a tremendous amount of work that has been done. There have been more than 18 months' worth of consultation and town hall meetings that was done under a previous group, the Consultative Immigration Reform Working Group. And so tonight, I would like to just acknowledge and thank Mr. William Maderos for chairing that and for taking this country through that process. And there were many, many town hall meetings, and there was a tremendous amount of information that was provided, and a lot of that information was repeated back to the public and was published in what we are affectionately calling the Maderos Report, okay? So this country has already been through quite a bit since 2016, okay? And so today, we are informing you and we are advising you about the government's intentions. However, we don't have the legislation before you today, okay? So what is a mixed-status family? So we are working with a very limited definition here. It is a family where you have parents that have either Bermudian status, or they are a permanent resident certificate holder, and there is either a son, or a daughter, or a spouse that has neither Bermudian status or PRC. So they don't have anything, okay? So this is a very specific problem that we've identified, okay? This is very, very specific. This is not every possible permutation out there of an individual who does not have a normalized immigration position with respect to the Act, okay? So this is very, very defined. I'm just emphasizing that, okay? So why is this a problem? Part of it is because of unfairness, and part of it is because some people are feeling like, because they have been born in this country, and they have grown up in this country, and they've contributed to this country, and they've served in the army, and they've paid their taxes, and they've worked here, and they thought that they were Bermudian, and they find that at some point they've actually had to leave this country because they find that they are not able to stay here, okay? So these are some of the problems that we're trying to address in this particular issue of mixed-status families. Very quickly, we had to be guided by specific principles for this particular problem. These are not the principles for all of immigration reform, but specifically with respect to mixed-status families, we felt that it was important that whatever legislative changes came forth, that they did not disadvantage Bermudian status holders, persons with Bermudian status. That's important. The second thing is that we would like to make the system more fair, okay? We would like it to be more equitable, in particular for those who are in that situation of being a mixed-status family. Thirdly, we don't want to be having this same discussion next year. It's not the intention of the government to fix it in 2019, and then we are still perpetuating this same problem, such that we have to come back with further amendments to try and address the same problem of mixed-status families. We would like to move on to another problem. Maybe it's PRC, maybe it's status, maybe it's land, it's something else, but we would like to fix this now and move on to something else. And finally, we don't want families to be separated, and that's taken directly from the Maderos Report. This is in line with international conventions, and it just makes sense. We hope that families can stay together. So I would like to give you a prototype, an example, and some people love the pictures, some people hate the pictures, but I want to be clear in terms of the concept. I want to be clear in terms of the policy that we're actually trying to describe. And so what we have here is a prototype, okay? This is an example of what a mixed-status family could be. We actually chose one of the more complex examples for illustrative purposes. So we have a color scheme that runs through the entire presentation. There are very few words, so hopefully, we'll get the hang of it. So blue represents Bermudian status, the amber represents permanent resident certificate holders, the red represents what we're trying to fix. These are the persons that have neither status or PRC. And then we have a special category of PRC, which is the purple, which only comes up in one of these scenarios, and so we'll talk about that at that time. So this is the way the presentation will actually proceed from here. We have talked with the Department of Immigration. We have talked with members of the Consultative Immigration Reform Working Group. We've talked to the bipartisan committee. We've talked with various stakeholders. We've talked to Cabinet. We have, to the best of our ability, tried to determine what the problem is. So we've documented that, and then we've classified them into different types of problems. So we put them into buckets, for lack of a better term. And the way that it has just worked out is that they fall into four buckets, or four categories of mixed-status families, according to our definition, okay? So this example is one of the fact that we have one generation that has Bermudian status, and then we have the next generation, so there are children who are born in Bermuda who have PRC. And then because of the nature of their PRC, the section of the Act that they were granted PRC under, they do not have the ability to pass on that permanent resident certificate to others, and so they have another generation that comes along that has neither Bermudian status nor PRC. Ladies and gentlemen, this is what we are attempting to address throughout this presentation, those individuals that have no place, okay? Okay? So that's an example. So let's get to the four problems. Problem one, this is a problem when we have siblings, and one sibling as a result of their date of birth, okay? Notice that we have the parents here who are permanent resident certificate holders, and then because of the date of birth of the child and various amendments that were made to the Immigration Act over the years, there have been many, many changes. One count from one of the local law firms said there had been over 100 amendments to the Immigration Act since 1956 that just relates to some of the issues that we're talking about. So there have been several changes, there have been several windows, there have been several processes that have been closed, and so what that has resulted in is, it has resulted in inequity in terms of individuals and their situation under the Act. And so in this case, we have one individual, the sibling, who has no status and no PRC, okay? That's the problem. Now, this is the part, and the only part, other than the handing in of the questions, where I would like some audience participation, because this is important. It is very important that we make sure from a definition perspective, we're talking about the same problem. So I think the problem here is clear. The problem is this individual in the red. So there are only so many options, okay? And this is where the participation from the audience comes in. I'd just like to do a quick survey, okay? So the options are blue for status, yellow for PRC, or red is they stay where they are. So let me just ask, how many individuals, by raise of hand in the room, say that this individual should stay red, no status and no PRC, even though this person was born in Bermuda, has lived in Bermuda their entire life, has contributed to Bermuda, but they have no rights here, okay? How many say that this individual should have PRC, which is the amber? Now, how many say that this individual should have the blue, which is status? I think that was resounding. That doesn't surprise me. The recommendations that we have brought forth are the recommendations that came from the section of the Maderos Report that deal with mixed-status families. That consultative process was a process where there were hundreds and hundreds of people that expressed their thoughts. What the government has done is we have taken that and we have put that forth as the policy position. So that's the same problem, and now the proposal under the Act, or the amendment to the Act, the Bermuda Immigration and Protection Amendment Act 2019, that the government intends to table, is that this individual goes from that situation, and as a result of their sibling, they get status. So we looked at problem, and now this is the proposed solution under the Amendment Act. So the problem was this color, and now they've turned that color, okay? I think we can go a bit faster now because the rest of the problems are very similar. So the second problem is having to do with age and residency requirements, and we're going to get into that one. So this is a situation where you have individuals who have come to Bermuda at some point. They were in Bermuda prior or on a certain date in 1989. There were lots of changes to the Immigration Act in 1989. Over the course of time, they've acquired Bermudian status, and so these two parents, they're blue, they have Bermudian status. That child, because of various timeframes, because of various changes to the Act, that child now has nothing. That's the problem. Now, I'm pausing here because we've had some feedback on some of these matters, and some individuals have said that can't happen. These are real cases. This is not an exaggeration. So you have people who have Bermudian status, and they have a child, and that child does not have anything. That's the problem. So that's the problem repeated, and now the solution, as recommended under the Maderos Report, is that that individual that has nothing now acquires status because their parents have status. So my question to the general public would be, from a policy perspective, what other option would make sense, other than the blue? Would it make sense for that person to stay red? Would it make sense for that person to become PRC? Okay, this is not quite the period for questions, but I will just take that. Bermudian status means that the person is Bermudian, they can do everything that a Bermudian can have. So yes, they would be able to vote, they would be able to own property, they are able to reside here, they're able to work here without work permit control, they're able to do everything and enjoy themselves as a Bermudian. So that is Bermudian status. My apologies, I did not actually explain that from the start. And a permanent resident certificate holder, the difference between that and a person who has Bermudian status is that a permanent resident certificate holder does not have the ability to vote, okay? Okay? So that's problem two. Problem three, this is a problem that is a result of changes to the Immigration Act that has resulted in two different classifications of permanent resident certificate holder, okay? So in this scenario, we have individuals who have been here since 1989, and they have PRC. The section of the Act that they have that is Section 31A of the Bermuda Immigration Protection Act, okay? Under that Act, that section of the Act, they are able to pass on their permanent resident They're able to pass it on to their children, but that provision is under Section 31B of the Act, okay? But Section 31B, PRC holders, are not able to pass on their PRC to that next generation. So this generation is born in Bermuda, and this generation is born in Bermuda, but this generation is able to have PRC, and this generation has nothing. That's the problem. So the proposal that was put forth is that there's PRC here, and that here, they're able to pass on that PRC as well, okay? So the distinction here is that there is PRC under 31A and PRC under 31B of the Act, and here, under the proposed changes to the legislation, they're just permanent resident certificate holders. So that distinction between 31A and 31B has been done away with, okay? And this is a special case because there are some issues with that particular PRC holder, simply because of the lack of the British Overseas Territory Citizenship, and there are some passport issues, but this is something that technical officers are looking into in terms of this recommendation, and it is expected that we can come up with some type of solution for that. The fourth and final problem is that of persons who are born overseas, right, or they're adopted overseas, and they have parents that have Bermudian status, okay? So you have a parent that has Bermudian status and has a child overseas, or they adopt a child overseas. So let's look at that particular issue. So currently, that parent who has Bermudian status, there is a way for that child to also have Bermudian status, even if they're born overseas. There's an administrative process, there is paperwork that has to be submitted, but the current legislation actually provides for that, okay? However, it's the intention of the government to make that process more streamlined, such that it is Bermudian status at birth, without any further requirements. And so the proposed solution is that that child, at birth, has Bermudian status, okay? So to be clear, there will be no requirement for that child to meet, or rather, for the parents to meet any domicile requirements, because that is the first generation that is born overseas. Now, this was not something that we just made up. This is consistent with the British Nationality Act. It's similar to a concept called British by Descent, and it's pretty much the same as what happens there. For any subsequent generations that are born overseas, so I want to highlight the fact that this is a person who is overseas, this is a child that's born overseas, should they never come back to Bermuda, and if this generation, right, is living overseas and has a child of their own, so they grow up and they have another generation, everything under the current Act would remain the same. So we are not changing this for any subsequent generations after. It's only for this first generation that's born overseas, okay? So that is the fourth and final problem. With that, the presentation is done.
Thank you, Department of Secretary. Thank you, Department of Secretary. At this time, I'd like to recognize, I do believe the, I do recognize the presence of the Honorable Premier, the Honorable E. David Burke. He stepped in just for a few moments. He was outside. He was joined by the Deputy Premier, the Honorable Walter Robban, JP MP. I also recognize, who was here early, was the Attorney General, Senator the Honorable Kathy Simmons, and also recognize two other senators that are in our presence today, Senator Crystal Caesar and Senator Marcus Jones. I apologize. I also recognize... I apologize, I also recognize MP Sylvan Richards. I didn't notice you up there, very good to have you, sir. And there's another? And Senator Dwayne Robinson is also present, and the Honorable Tane Ferbitt, as we complete the list of those members of our parliament who are here today and will be looking into these matters in the very, very near future. As we wait for any further questions, did anyone have any further questions, written further questions that you may have? We appreciate members tonight, for those who have attended, for providing us with the written questions that you do have. It creates an orderly opportunity for us to look at the questions. Also, it is that we are not asking questions just for asking questions, and that the questions that you do ask are sometimes answered by the Minister and our panelists, or the Permanent Secretary, as they are entrined. So we are trying to make sure that we maintain that list, maintain those questions, and provide them all going forward. Just as a reminder, we are tonight looking into the Immigration and Protection Amendment Act that is being looked at, that has been looked at by our committee, and they have deliberated, and we are looking forward to continuing to deliberate with just themselves, but also with you as well, as we look to bring immigration reform to Bermuda in a way that satisfies a community that has needed it for a very, very long time. Minister, a member of the audience is just wanting you to just signify along with the panel. They just want for clarification purposes, I recognize this can be Google, what is the significance of 1989 as it relates to the particular Act itself? What is the significance of 1989?
I'm going to call on my technical officer, Dr. Ming.
The significance of 1989? Dr. Donnette Ming. Donnette Ming. Chief Immigration Officer.
Good evening, everyone. One of the references to one of the examples given by P.S. Anderson related to July 31st, 1989, you would have seen 20B-2B, which was one of the categories for the parents, which was the timeframe by which a person would have been resident in Bermuda to obtain status under that particular category.
Thank you, Doctor. Another question for the panel, and this can be for the Permanent Secretary, it is how many people are involved in this mixed-status family group?
So, there is information that resides within the Department of Immigration, and there's information that we have at the Department of Statistics, and there is other information that is out there. But in order for us to get an accurate number, we had to almost triangulate, we had to look at multiple different sources. And so, we are extremely confident that the individuals that fall into the scenarios that we've described, certainly Problems 1, 2, and 3, the number is less than 2,000. In fact, the number that we came up with was 1,960, and that is within a range of 5% up or down either way. Based upon our experience, our expectation is because of the fact that some people move overseas, because some people may not avail themselves of that opportunity, more than likely, the individuals that will take advantage of the opportunity that is provided by this proposed legislative change is in the range of about 1,000 people.
Thank you. A technical question for the Permanent Secretary. In the first color-coded example slide, a case was highlighted where a child is born in Bermuda to parents born in Bermuda who hold PRC, and their child receives neither status nor PRC. There are situations where children may be born in the future into this position. They said that was in the first color-coded example slide.
That one? Okay, that was just an example. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the question. How is this going to be addressed? So, this example would be addressed under problem, I want to say, this is problem 3. Okay? So, it's that same problem, because the parents have PRC and the child has nothing, and so the child would get PRC. That individual would get PRC.
In example four, Permanent Secretary, does the parent with status have to be born in Bermuda for their child born overseas to have status? Give the Permanent Secretary just a minute to ponder that particular question. You've also given several questions, Minister, and panel, as it relates to, they just said that this is a complex issue. They recognize that there is some significant, they are asking about the stumbling blocks, but I think we've covered as it relates to the stumbling blocks, and we appreciate that question from an attendee. And what happened, and they also speak of the unintended consequences of this, and do we see any further pitfalls as we go along? And then, one of our attendees asked the question, why are PRCs given more rights than Bermudians, panel? They are right by birth, are many generational. Why are they given more rights and preference issues?
I disagree with the points that PRCs have been given more rights than Bermudians. I think the aim of this particular mixed-status family legislation, there were people that were, there were people that were not being, there were people that were being born in Bermuda that were not being able to have any immigration, regularized immigration status. They didn't have a home, they couldn't go anywhere. And so simply, the aim of this legislation was to regularize some people's immigration status, specifically the people that were born in Bermuda, and they did not have any place to call home. If you can look at what the aim of the legislation is, is for the people with mixed-status family, the people that did not have a place to call home, to actually make them have, them to have a place to call their home that is Bermuda, people that were born in this country.
Thank you, Minister. There's one further question, and of course, I'll take the Permanent Secretary and answer.
Sure, sure. So, the question was for problem four. In this particular situation, does the parent with status have to be born in Bermuda for their child born overseas to have status? And the answer is no, because as long as the parent has Burmudian status, then this provision would actually work. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Not necessarily a question that is related to the 1 through 4 as it relates to this particular immigration matter, but one of the members of, one of our attendees is asking, a large number of Bermudians have found opportunities abroad. Some of them are skilled and have children who are skilled. Will these skills match up with our needs? How do we get these people to come home and fill the jobs that otherwise would be filled
I'm looking at Crystal Caesar, because that is something that she's very passionate about, and she's been hurling, yes, Crystal, I said it. That is something that my colleague is very passionate about. Last night, we spoke about this legislation. If you look at, if you can go to the last, if you can go to the slide, the last slide that deals with Bermudians living abroad?
Yeah, that's this one.
Yes? The big, the slide with the child, so you have parents, that Bermudian parents that had their kids whilst they were living abroad, right? The aim is, the aim of this legislation, what we're trying to do, we're trying to get talented Bermudians that were living abroad, or the kids that were born abroad, we want to get people to come back to Bermuda and to live in Bermuda, and to work in Bermuda, and to be productive members of society. We're going to work on this, and we're going to make sure that this represents what we want, an opportunity for Bermudians to come home and for Bermudians to work. And that's something that we have to commit to, to make sure that this is right, so Bermudians can come home to work. But also, we have to make sure that the immigration policies generally, Ms. Horton, we have to make sure the immigration policies generally, that when we have employers, that they are, when they're hiring Bermudians, that they have to have plans for training and development, true training and developing Bermudians. This afternoon, I was at the Immigration Department, and we were looking at a specific job application that came in, and they wanted a job for three years. I looked at the application, and there was no reason that I could not approve the job application for three years. And then, I said, listen, whilst we are going to approve the job for three years, we have to put a caveat in there, that they have to put a plan of development to identify a suitably trained Bermudian, and put a training and development plan in there, so at the end of the three years, it is a plan and a suitable Bermudian that is trained and developed to take over, so they don't need another work permit. That is something, that is something. So, the challenge is that we are sending our young Bermudians abroad to school. There has to be an opportunity for us to highlight where are the lacunas, or the gaps, or the opportunities for Bermudians to train. Our young people are going away to accredited universities, they're coming home, they're doing internships, and this is a tripartite, so we have to make sure that our young people are being rightly trained. There have to be organizations that are committed to training Bermudians. If there are organizations that are getting the benefits of people living and working in Bermuda, they must have plans to train and develop Bermudians. It is the responsibility of the Minister with the responsibility for immigration, the Immigration Board, it is our responsibility that when the applications come through, the work permits, that if Bermudians are suitably qualified, that they are given the opportunities. We're not talking about if Bermudians are not suitably qualified, we're talking about giving opportunities to rightly train Bermudians. That is something that companies, when we meet with them now, we have to put plans in place. Is this system perfect? It is not. But there are enough opportunities now where we can say, listen, training and developing Bermudians, that has to be the mantra now. If we don't train and put plans in place, or we're not going to have rightly trained Bermudians. Yes, there has to be an emphasis on Bermudians that are living abroad, your country is ready for you to return home, doctors, nurses, carpenters, we have to put something in place. The ethos in this room, people are not against immigration, they're not xenophobic, Bermudians want to be able to come home and take their rightful place in their country, that's not lost on us. But the conversely is, we also have to look at a system that has people in the country with no immigration status, and we also have to equally be, look in what's going on and say, listen, we have to do something to regularize that and allow them to have a place that they can call home as well. And so whilst I do believe, and I'm firm and fervent in my beliefs, that we have to have opportunities for Bermudians in their own country, we also have to realize, guess what? We need expatriate workers. Don't think because I'm saying that we need expatriate workers, that negates the fact that I do, that I'm saying that Bermudians have to have a place of primarycy in their country. There has to be a balance, there has to be a balance, and that is about striking the right balance. We need a thriving economy, we need people in Bermuda to be working, we have to have people that come into the country. And so, we can't say on one side that we don't want anybody in Bermuda from outside of the country, I get that. But the flip side of it is, we have to make sure that our people have opportunities, that they're given the opportunity to thrive in their own country. And if I leave any message in this room, if I leave my DNA, my fingerprints on anything, I do not want anybody to leave this room to say that this committee is saying that we are anti-foreign, or we are anti-opening up the floodgates. We believe that it's going to be a dedicated, it's going to be a delicate balance, and we have to get it right. We believe that there are people in Bermuda that need their immigration status regularized, and we have to work to that together to make it happen.
Thank you, Minister. As a furtherance to part of that, there's been a number of questions that are relating to, and I'll read this one, it encompasses quite a few of the questions. Will term limits be reintroduced back into the new immigration reform policy to help negate having a, to grant status or PRCs on a continual basis? You've not discussed, thank you, Minister. Thank you. Here's a question, I have a Bermudian status born, I please for the Permanent Secretary, I have Bermudian status born in the US, I have a son who was granted status for the 21st. Let me remind those who are sending in questions, that if you do have any personal questions, please send all of these personal questions for a case study, you'll be answered, and I'll repeat what, jscott@gov dot BM. Please send that question, and as a matter of fact, I'll record this one, and I'll hand it to her personally. Trueborn Bermudians only have one passport, and Bermuda is their only country. How many passports do PRCs and status Bermudians have? They have options to go to another country, Bermudians do not. Minister?
Again, we're, we are, we have to, we have to, we have to identify that I understand the room, I understand why people are clapping, because they are speaking about a country that has a history of disenfranchisement. That's not lost on me. So, when the people are clapping in the room, too, the person is saying, what are they clapping for? They're clapping for years of people being disenfranchised, not being given opportunity, being, watching their kids not being able to have jobs, watching opportunities seep out of their hands. I actually get that. Understand the other side. The other side, the mixed-status family, is not focusing. Remember, you did not see the PRC legislation saying that we're giving this up to people with PRCs, you didn't see that. You see us looking at something specific. There are people in here that have no immigration, they have no way, no country to call their own. We are saying that this is the right thing to do. So when you go off into the passport thing, we believe, we believe that that's an issue, we believe that that is a significant issue, there are social ills in this country that have to be fixed. What we're looking at, and I'm not negating that there are social ills in the country, I'm simply saying that right now, we believe that there is something with mixed-status family that we want to focus on, and we're looking at this, and we're going to focus on this, and when we come back, we're going to look at other segments of the immigration reform going forward.
Thank you, Minister. We will observe the fact that we are 10 minutes after the hour of eight, that we promised that we would try to stay on time. We've answered a number of the questions that have been given. For those of you who did not get your questions answered, please take advantage of jscott@gov dot BM, and make sure that you forward a lot of these questions, and these that are on these cards will be presented to the committee for them to give us some consideration. Some of them are very comprehensive. We recognize that this particular reform is going to take a whole lot of dialogue. But Minister, I'm going to give the Permanent Secretary an opportunity to sum up. Yes? And each panelist will be given an opportunity for 60 seconds to sum up, Permanent Secretary, and then all, each of the panelists, and then we'll finish up with the Minister. Thank you, Permanent Secretary.
I would just like to thank you for your attention and for your attendance here. There are many, many people that have been working extremely hard behind the scenes, and I don't want to leave anyone out, but it's not possible for us to do anything like this without working very collaboratively with the Department of Immigration, and I want to acknowledge the leadership of Dr. Donnette Ming as the Chief Immigration Officer. We have had so much guidance from the Attorney General's chambers, and in particular, the individuals that assist us with the drafting, it has been extremely educational for us, and so we have to acknowledge them as well. We have worked extremely closely with the bipartisan parliamentary subcommittee, and we have also had quite a bit of dialogue with lawyers and with individuals that are in the field, and so there are just many, many internal and external stakeholders that we have to acknowledge as well. And finally, I would like to acknowledge the leadership of the Minister of National Security, the Honorable Wayne Keynes, and the Security, the Honorable Wayne Keynes and the Cabinet and the government of the day in attempting to tackle something that is very difficult. This is not the easiest of subjects and it requires a certain amount of courage. And so, I just want to acknowledge the efforts that are being made to address these. Thank you so much.
MP Christopher Famas?
Good evening again, everybody. In March 2016, myself and others jumped over a wall to block parliament to protect this country from unfair immigration policies. You all voted us in to protect you. We sit on a panel with two of our colleagues who happen to be from the other party. And I sit here tonight to tell you, they are here to fight for your rights as well. There are disagreements, there are agreements, there are more agreements than disagreements. But I can assure you, as I'm a pundit, that the final result will be what is best for this country. We cannot have a country without gas workers and we cannot have a country where Bermudians are put second. So, as my younger cousin, the Minister, said, it's a delicate balance, but we will be fighting for that and we will be keeping you in tune with what we are doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. MP Renee Bean, 60 seconds.
Surely. I think my colleague sums it up correctly when he says that immigration reform isn't easy. I don't know if any of us, maybe signed one, would have thought that we would have had such complex situations and also having to hear stories and the passion that goes behind it. But I think that the one thing that I want to, if I could leave you with this evening, is that the Act is called the Bermuda Immigration and Protection Act of 1956. And I say they were protection and I'm focusing on that because that is what our role is to do as well. Whilst we look, seek to strike a balance in what it is that we agree on and disagree on, we also realize that the Act was put in place to protect Bermudians. So, I hope that as we move forward and that as you Bermudians and Normudians and this presence just sitting here this evening come with us, because it's a journey, it's not an easy journey, but it is a journey, I believe, that everyone who is sitting here is committed to getting the best result.
Mr. William. Ms. Leah Scott.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out this evening and just to kind of reinforce what my colleagues have said, although we may have different ideologies in terms of our political status, we are on Team Bermuda and we are going to do what we have to do to make sure that everyone is afforded the opportunities that they should have here. And again, I would just like to ask for patience from the public and we fully support the Minister. This has been a challenge for him. It was very difficult for him to say that we are not going to table the legislation tomorrow. And I know that it's not going to be an easy conversation for him to have with his colleagues. So, I would ask that you support him in his endeavors because he is totally involved and engaged and wants to do the right thing.
Mr. Ben Smith.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'd like to, I'd like to reiterate that the, first of all, I'd like to thank the Minister for giving us the opportunity to be part of this committee because it is, it's been a long process. We've been through a lot of details. There was a, the complication of immigration, when you talk about something that's been there since 1956 and we're having to go through each step of it and realize that if you make a decision in one direction, it can have effects that will affect multiple generations after us. So, we're taking our time, we're going through each part of that. And tonight, that discussion led to the Minister pulling the bill for tomorrow. We are, we are really trying to do what's best for everybody in Bermuda. We're taking our time to go through this. It's a, it's a very delicate balance, but I think it's important that both sides are here, working together to try to get what's best for the country.
I saw Mr. Madeiras and the microphone. Mr. William Madeiras.
Good evening, everyone. It's not the Madeiras report. I'd have, we would have called it, we'd have called it something a lot nicer than that. But I, the report was the work of a lot of people. We had 14 public forums, 14 of them. I wish they'd have been as well organized as this one, just for the record. And a big thank you because I think Madam Senator is here this evening. Caesar, I didn't see you, but thanks so much for coming along. It's not the Madeiras report, it's a report. I just had the very good fortune, I was very humbled to have been invited to chair it. And originally, and I think Crystal will bear me out, when we were very first put together, it, we were given a mandate that we were going to deal with adoption, mixed-status families, PRC and status, and we were going to do that in 90 days. It took us one month to agree our name. I know, I know. The Consultative Immigration Reform Working Group. And 18 months later, we came up with a document which was the outcome of 14 public forums, hundreds of people coming to those forums. And what we did, we did our very best to take what was their feelings, their thoughts, their opinions, their views, and to inculcate it in a document that we could follow, if I can say this plain English. I can't begin to tell you how challenging immigration is, the topic. It's highly personal. People have so much vested in the outcome. And so, I think the Minister and the bipartisan group is to be lauded for taking it on. It took us 18 months to just gather the information. Imagine what you then have to do when you've got the information and you've got to then try to craft something that is legislatively sound, that does not create unintended consequences, that gives the best possible outcome for Bermuda, regardless of where you're from and where you're born and what color you are and what's your surname and all the rest of it. And so, I would, I would ask that Bermuda be patient with the process. We've had too many examples in the past where we really did set down the right road. I really do believe that some of the amendments that were made in the past, and forgive me, I know I'm over 60 seconds, but I'll finish in a second. They really set out to do the right thing. I'm convinced of it. The group was convinced of it, but didn't always create the right outcome. And so, if calm heads can prevail, if you can let the bipartisan group do its work in its time, and you're right, if we can support the Minister because he's going to get some licks for this one. But, you know, sometimes licks are what it's going to take. But I know he's up to it. Thank you very much.
Just before the Minister comes, can we give a round of applause to all the committee members, those members in the ministry, their support staff? They've done an excellent job. Just before the Minister comes, just to give them our round of applause. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, can we thank Mr. Simmons, JPMP, Mr. Scott Simmons, JPMP?
You're welcome.
I was just sitting here reflecting on the conversation around the Americans' challenges that they're having with immigration. My mind then went to what is going on in the UK with Brexit, went a little further field to what's happening in Italy with the immigrants coming from Ethiopia. Then I was reflecting even, even more closely on some things that are happening in South Africa with the Nigerians in South Africa. And so, as I was doing a global juxtaposition of the challenges that people are having around the world, I then came back to some of the challenges that we're having in Bermuda. And I realized that Bermuda is having a challenge. And whilst ours is a bit different, I think that as a country, we have always had some challenges and this is no different. When I asked myself, what do I want my legacy to be? I want my legacy to be that we accepted that we had racial differences, that we had some differences where people came from and that this body with your support were able to work through these differences, put together a plan, put together a bill that reflected a harmonious and a better country. Now, I understand the history of this country, the rubrics, the pain, the discord, the angst that is within our people. But still, I believe that we can make a difference and make our country better. It is that abiding belief, the only reason why I entered into politics and why it might seem as altruistic, when I talk to my colleagues, they all share with me the same belief. And so, when everybody hurls all of the challenges that we have, we have a responsibility to try and fix it. And so, I love Ms. Williams because she gives me a line in length that keeps me, my feet to the ground where I know what my line in length is. Ms. Horton, when she comes, she gives it to me raw. And guess what? We have to know what the people are saying in certain quarters of this country. I, we need that and I appreciate that. But at the same time, there are other segments of our community that they have been in my office and we've listened to them. We've heard them cry, we've heard them, their pieces. And I believe as a country, we have to take the experiences of everyone and I believe together, we can move this thing forward. I believe that we have an opportunity to listen to each other. I believe we have an opportunity to pull this thing together. We can't leave anybody behind through this. We cannot leave anybody behind through this. I struggled with, what does my leadership look like if I take this bill off the table tomorrow? I really did. I believe it was the right thing to do. We sat at a table this afternoon and we were at odds. There were things that you saw today that we have not agreed upon. Give us the opportunity to make this thing, to have a few more discussions. I believe we can do it right. This is not the end of comprehensive immigration reform. We have to have some more difficult discussions. PRC, we have to have that discussion. We were talking about what does that look like? We have to have these discussions. We cannot just bury our heads in the sand. There are a number of things that we have to have those discussions. It's going to be uncomfortable, it's going to cause you to squirm, but let's have the discussion, let's do it together. We don't have to be acrimonious, we don't have to be nasty. But guess what? We have to do it. I believe that this is Bermuda. We have to be, I cannot be afraid to say Bermudians have the right to be employed in Bermuda. We have to have the right to say, listen, I want my grandchild to come and get, to want a job. We shouldn't be afraid of that. But at the same time, we have to understand what a balanced society looks like. Let's continue to work together, let's continue to love everyone, let's continue to make our country a better place. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving us the opportunity to lead. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. And in keeping with where we are tonight at the Barclay Institute, you know there's going to be some homework. I would implore and the Ministry is asking that each of you secure yourselves a copy of the report, the M Report, since Madeiras is inappropriate. The M Report, secure yourself a copy of when the draft of this particular bill becomes available so that you are able to compare and to also, I'm told, that that particular report, the Madeiras Report, is located on the Bernouze site and that we will also through the Ministry provide copies and online so that you can actually see it. Thank you for coming, everyone. Travel safely and may God continue to bless each and every one of us. Thank you for coming.